Good evening and welcome to the Budget and Finance Committee. Today is Wednesday, April 24th. It is currently 6:26 PM. Today, we have voting members, councillor from District B, Wendy Luzon, and councillor from District D?
Twenty.
And the vice chair, Vivian Marmo. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2022, this meeting of Budget and Finance Committee is being conducted both in person and via remote participation. A reminder that persons who would like to listen or view or view this meeting while in progress may attend either here at the City Council Chamber or may use our Facebook and YouTube pages. At this point, can you please join me in the Fudge of Allegiance? You guys might want to, if you can't hear me, you might want to call up. Councillors, we do not have any minutes to approve, so we're right into the agenda. First item is Item 204-24, Payment of Prior Year Invoice in the amount of $468.50 with $0.50 to the United Construction and Forest Street LLC. This was brought to us by the airport manager, Francisco Urrena, but we have a board member here to speak on his behalf.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Bill Collins, Lawrence Airport Commissioner, One Flat Court, Lawrence. My address, this is Item 204. This was a prior year invoice on a John Deere front-end loader that we had. That cost $468.50 was just to get an estimate of the repair. As it turned out, the repair was too costly. That old John Deere front loader was turned in for a brand-new one, and we got credit for it. And so this was simply for the bill to assess the damage on it. And it happens that this company merged with another company. So in their, after the merger, there was some delay in the invoices and the billing. I guess we got the bill late, but that's the essence of what this cost us for.
Councillors, any questions or comments? Here and now, I will enter the motion.
So move to submit this item 20424, Payment of a Prior Year Invoice of $468.50, United Construction Forest Street LLC. Submit that would be favorable recommendation to full council.
Motion has been made by the Vice Chair, Zer Sacke.
Second.
Seconded by councillor Luzon. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next item, Item 2. We are, before I continue, we are currently updating our system, which is why we're avoiding old school today. So apologize if you can't hear me, but I'm gonna try my best. Item 205-24, Amendment to the Non-Union Classification Plan to add Assistant Commissioner of Health Code Services to Grade D. And we have our CFO and Acting Personnel Director, Mr. Ionello Mark Ar. Ionello, to speak on this item.
Excuse me. Councillors, as my memo indicates, the City Council approved filling the position of an Assistant Commissioner of Health and Code Services, a position that was vacant for more than six months. So the council approved it, but that position was not graded in the new Non-Union Classification Plan. So that's what we need today is to place it in, or requesting place it in range or Grade D, so we can post and advertise and fill a position.
And for the record, Grade D, the salary range is $63,000, $63,700 to $104,000.
That's the range, yes.
That's the range. Any questions or comments, councillors? Councillor Marmo.
On this memo, CFO, it says, is in line with other Assistant Director positions such as?
Such as, in a second, I'll tell you. Grade D has positions such as the Assistant Comptroller. There's an Assistant Superintendent of Cemeteries, Assistant Director of the Library. Those are all Assistant Director-type positions.
Any other questions or comments? At this point, I will entertain a motion.
I recommend a motion for Item Number 20524, Amendment of the Non-Union Classification Plan Add Assistant Commissioner of Health Code Services to Grade D. Submitted to full council with a favorable recommendation.
Motion has been made by the Vice Chair, Zer Sacke.
Second.
Seconded by councillor Luzon. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Item 206-24, Authorization to Expand Grant Funds in the Amount of $42,552 from the Merrimack Valley Renewal Fund, from the Attorney General's Office, brought to us by our library director, Director Ruh. Director Ruh.
Hi, thank you so much for having us, Vice President. First and foremost, I wanted to applaud the signs that are in front of your desk today. That is very amazing. I think it's important, most importantly, to be aesthetically pleasing and most importantly, branding yourself. Because this is the first time that I get to address Vivian and think of her position, most importantly, because of your plaques. What you do see here in front of you today, I am the Library Director for Lawrence Public Library, located at 51 Lawrence Street, as well as 351 Progress Street. I am coming here to you based on the opportunity and the support to be able to apply for the Merrimack Valley Renewal Funds with, in line with the Attorney General's Office. These funds would allow us to continue and to actually start what would be the opportunity for the South Lawrence Branch, will be a conceptual design. This is in regards of a partnership with BTQ to see what it would be to have, first and foremost, how we can tap into its MIR funds in order to be able to make this building what we call soundproof the best thing to say is energy renewal development. So we have what we call HVAC systems in place, water heating pumps. Right now, our building is operating under an oil tank. And as of post-pandemic, prior to we obtained the administration of the library, we were closed. My hopes is to, one day, in line with all of you, to reopen that building for our South Lawrence.
Any questions or comments? Director Ruh, I have, this is in my, in my.
I hope so, you get it ready.
So I just, to clarify, this, the $42,552 is strictly for the energy renewal portion of the design?
Correct, so it's actually, so the allotted amount that was actually designed for this library was about 1.5. And what we're doing is, is that we've been speaking directly to the AGO office, and they're able to give it to us in increments dispersed into that amount. And the reason why is because, you know, the bandwidth in the City of Lawrence, and want to make sure to do it delicately, based on what we were able to afford, how we're able to give in regards to time. And what we've noticed is that the first step to this is actual sound, which is conceptual design, which is the architects, engineers, really looking in and focusing into what the actual library needs. And they will be able to give us the information we need to further pursue this grant.
And then, aside from, so, as we continue to use up the rest, you're gonna continue to come in front of the council?
Absolutely. That's my, my hopes is to be fully transparent with you guys with the process of this, with this unbuilding with the South Lawrence branch.
So I will reserve the, my other questions, and we will go through them as you, as you come through, as you come to us.
As I go upon the.
As you come, yeah.
Absolutely. I appreciate them, yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Councillor Marmo.
Isn't it, I'm assuming this is Phase 1, which happened to know out of how many phases? And out of each phase, is it like an increments of like $40,000, or it all depends on the type of, what the focus of the project is gonna be on?
So I would like to say that the Phase 1, and I appreciate your use of this terminology. Phase 1 for me was actually having the board of trustees, as well as my administration, know that we have to actually remove everything from this facility and bring it and find the space planning we need at our main branches, at the people in Lawrence Street. I consider that Phase 1, and the construction term is not Phase 1. We're Phase 0, but that's not a measure, so let's be realistic. What Phase 1 is for us right now is exactly this. Is the conceptual design to have the engineers and the architects to let us know how much this project will cost us, if we will need partners or stakeholders to be involved in it. But most importantly, to really know the necessities and the needs that the city needs to be able to be able to be a prominent identity in that area of Lawrence. So as of right now, yes, councillor, we are in phase 1.
Councillor, councillor Luzon. It's okay, I hear you.
Thank you, Councillor Marmo. So it's the, thank you, Director Abril.
Question.
Question, so the library is completely closed, the one in South Lawrence?
When I embarked and we see this position, this library has been closed now for relatively four years.
Okay. Is we, and I, is the, are the residents informed of where is the plan for that building?
The reality of it is, currently, we're in a waiver. And I'm gonna make sure that you guys are aware of that as well right now. The library is in a waiver within the state. So we report to the Massachusetts Board of Library Consortium, and we have to receive a requirement of the municipality appropriation requirement, which is where the city supports us in endeavor to keep a library institution as a free resource for the public, supporting a census of over 80,000 people. I'm happy to report, when I embarked in this journey, we had a number of about 37,000 patrons, mid-pandemic, almost close pandemic. And now, we actually cater to over 63,000 people. And we see those numbers already being toppled now. So what happens with that is that the idea is that we need a branch, absolutely. And that is a market, and most importantly, that's a denomination we're not reaching. And I know that if you're not from Lawrence, you don't understand that, figuratively speaking, it's .6 mile radius from the public, the, our main branch, which is 51 Lawrence Street. .6 mile radius for some who are not from the area may seem little. But people who are from here know that south and north are very different. And we witnessed that during the gas explosion. So our real model is, as a library institution, is to be able to go ahead and make sure that the democratic space is protected and that we're able to provide that same institution in South Lawrence. So as involving the public itself, no ma'am. We have not made any effort besides our fundraiser for the book, the book sale that we did, I think it was past December of 2023, in order to inform the public that the space is now completely revamped and we're using the space to kind of advocate for stakeholders to invest in us. That has not been done as of December of 2023. Right now, is getting the proper stakeholders to know how much it will be to condition the City of Lawrence without compromising our municipality and in regards to our expenditures to make sure that we actually can give them what we promise. So as of right now, the phase is simply this, councillor, is to specifically know what we're getting into before we commit to such a project.
Thank you, Director Abril. To you, my chairman. Because we get calls, I get calls from residents in this town. I always direct them to come sit around and talk. But I think when, when ready, it will be my, this community suggestion to inform through your Facebook page or any other, any other platform, to inform the resident that is, that you have something, a plan. And it will be beneficial for the community on that side of the office. Thank you, Director.
Thank you, councillor. And to just to answer that directly, I want to make sure that the City of Lawrence actually out of the waiver that we've been in for the last almost 20, almost two decades, in order to ensure my public, before I post on any of our social media platforms that have increased over 33%, 33%, that we give them the right information based on what the municipality has decided to do in regards to supporting the mission of the library.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, madam.
Are you sure you want to be Director of the library? The way, you have, you have much support, I mean, I'm sure you know, but I, I appreciate listening to your, to your information.
Thank you, ma'am. I have my administration team here because I think it's important for staff development. And I actually invited them here today because the only way we can assure that we have leaders is that they actually see us in a place.
Thank you.
Any other council president? Well, I always admire the way that the library for a little, little bit of money,
good presentations, and actually help all the council to do our job. Definitely appreciate the way that you guys bring things up to us. I keep on telling people, as much money you get from the council, as minimum as you bring to the council. And it's the opposite when it is a little bit of money. Because I remember you guys, and it's, it's a tendency. It's not just this administration. Previous administration as well is like, great amount of information because you're excited about your job. And that's, that's the tend, the passion that you guys put into is, is something that make a huge difference.
Thank you.
And like people said, the information provided to the council is proportional to the amount of money that, that, the opposite of the amount, of the amount of money that you get. The little amount of money, more information. A lot of money, not information whatsoever. And it is, it is that way. But I'm glad that you guys have acknowledged it.
Thank you, sir. And to your point, if you, if may I ask, sir, one of the things that I realize is that, as a community, there's so many nonprofits here, specifically in Lawrence. And I want to make sure that it's known here and as well as we share in other spaces, is that we are the original nonprofit of the community. So what we want to do, specifically for municipality, is to make sure that we gear our attention and our finances to the library because in that institution, we're being able to disperse the type of resources we have for all those institutions, not only our patrons, but also the organizations that are trying to thrive in the City of Lawrence. And we have to make that a point because as we advocate for those funds, it is important that you're part of that. Because if I come in front of you and we're now in year four of the five-year waiver limit, it is now up to you to make that decision. So thank you.
Any other questions? At this point, I will enter a motion.
So move Item Number 20624, Authorized to expand, expand the grant funds in the amount of $42,552 Merrimack Valley Renewal Fund, from the Attorney General's Office, to be sent to full council with a favorable recommendation.
Motion has been made by the Vice Chair, Zer Sacke.
Second.
Seconded by councillor Luzon. Role call. Councillor, discussion. Role call, councillor Marmo.
Yes.
Councillor Luzon.
Yes.
Councillor President.
I will be able to talk on here, this will be a show of the power.
We have to, I don't think.
I will be able to talk.
That's it, he's a woman, I tell him.
All right, so. And then the chair wants, yeah, thank you so much, moving on. So item, are you sure his mark of stage when he was acting?
It's, it's, it's the same then, I mean, if I, if I, it's a noble.
He's not in the middle of the ball, so therefore, yes, standing.
No, I, yeah, yeah, I, I should. All right, Item 207-24, Authorization to expand donated funds in the amount of $5,000 from Haffner State Kicks Foundation. So I cover.
Thank you. And if may I ask, Vice President Rontek, I think you might need to do a role call for his vote to be considered for this part.
So we can hold on.
I will be, I'm gonna.
Oh, you're, oh, yeah. So, excuse me. Continue, ma'am.
You have.
Thank you. As of authorization to expand donated funds, we want to be more than grateful for our Haffner State Kicks Foundation. They came to our library with not one, but two of their board members. And one of the board members happens to sit in the Friends of the Library for the Boston Public Library. We are reflective of their community, so they want to know how they can extend their house. Unfortunately, at the time, we have been finding a way to combat the waiver and also go through budget. And in regards to that, we're also in the middle of our five-year strategic plan, which I'm excited to share with you when that time comes. However, they still felt that it was fair to share that they aligned with our vision, and they donated $5,000. Into our discrepancy, what I will be using $5,000 for, in full transparency, is for staff development. Retention is very important here in the City of Lawrence, and that comes with investing in our, in our staff. And as you can see today, this is part of it. So one of the things that we do as a library institution is to make sure that, listening to our staff development and listening to what they would like to do. So what we would like to do with those $5,000, in addition to thank you for Haffner State Kicks Foundation for receiving those funds, is to make sure that we invest that back in. And if you do that, it's by employee retention because those are employees are the ones that align with the vision of where we see the city tomorrow.
Any questions or comments? Councillor Marmo.
Director Abril, if you don't mind going into a little further detail as to what that actually looks like.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for asking, councillor. A few of the things that I came when I embarked, and I appreciate the previous administration that I was able to take this, this position from. I think one of the things that we've really noticed is that there really is, and it happens to be a common denominator in the City of Lawrence, we call it blueprint. Is when you take a position, and there's actually a workflow, a standard operations procedure in place, an individual development plan, a performance evaluation developed. So our goal with this is to instruct our employees to actually invest in themselves and see how they reflect in the City of Lawrence. So we started with individual development plans. And this is something new, but that comes with a budget. Because if we're investing in them and we're asking them to identify where they need help, we need a budget to be able to help them. So that comes with, might be seminars, webinars, it might be actually part of consortium partnerships that we're a part of, which is the American Library Association, the Merrimack Board, I'm sorry, Merrimack Valley Library Consortium, Consortium. There's the Master's Board of Library Consortium, and then there's Juice Academy. There's so many institutions that allow us to be able to have this structure. The thing is, if we don't have a budget that aligns with this, then we can't provide that service. So if I'm asking you to invest in yourself, it'll be a disservice to me knowing that financially, you can't meet that based on the salaries that you receive. So it is up to us to make sure that we can guarantee that. It might be beneficial to the library, which is what I would hope would be the purpose, but it also might be individually reflective of the patron who's serving our community. And that's okay too.
At this point, I will enter a motion.
So move Item Number 20724, Authorized to expand donated funds in the amount of $5,000 for Haffner State Kicks Foundation, to be sent to full council with a favorable recommendation.
Motion has been made by the Vice Chair, Zer Sacke.
Second.
Seconded by councillor Luzon. Discussion. Any discussion? No, my hesitation was role call or not. All, all, all to the role calls, I want this to be like role call. Councillor Marmo.
Yes.
Councillor Luzon.
Yes.
Councillor President is, cannot vote, and the chair votes in the form of. All right, and our last new agenda item is Item 208-24. Before I move on, Maria, can you make sure in the midst that we reflect that the council president is, is that what I'm hearing? Item 208-24, Authorization to expand funds in the amount of $22,000 for the library initiative for teens and tweens from the Boston Foundation, Director Ruh.
If you're gonna have me, my president. Excuse me. So this is not the first time that LITT grant has come before you. We have partied with them before, and they have been outstanding supporter of the mission in the City of Lawrence. And I'm outstanding grateful for them. But most importantly, we do have to go through a vigorous process with any grant to be able to take the time allocated to submit an application and do the due diligence to be able to be approved for that. My hopes is that with the city's support, and the city council, and the mayor's support, that we will get to a point that we can sustain all the efforts that we're doing in order to be able to give what we need as a resource of the community. I would like to consider ourselves a Lawrence Learning Center, what have you. Nonetheless, this $22,000 has been given to us to specifically endorse the Teens Department, the YA, Young Adults Center. Prior to me coming on, there was a huge space planning that we need to embark, we need to embark on. The YA space, what we call the YA corner, which is the original LITT grant that you guys had approved before, years prior, actually gave us a corner out of the second-floor reference area. And unfortunately, I don't know if you guys know and can relate, but if you put a teenager with an adult who's trying to do a resume, it does not work. So our hopes with this was to create a space, and a space that they so desperately need in our institution. So we did a complete space, space planning, and they were part of that initiative. Their voice was included in that initiative. So what we ended up doing is, at the third floor, we moved our local history collection into the second floor, which we called the Adult Reference Area, which is normally where you go to study, buy, study space, computer lab, what have you. And then now we created, after was the third-floor space, we call the YA space, the teen area. And I will say tremendously, based on statistics, because in order for us to be able to receive these grants, you need numbers, right, analytics? And one of the things that I can share is, at the time when we had the teen corner, we had 33 students a month. I'm happy to report today, just, and I have not received the numbers from this month because we've been a little bit behind. But as of last month, we received over 692 students a month. Teenagers, YA students. And now, we have been able to be embarking programs, not only that include what we call digital equity space. We do, was it game, video game every Tuesday. They do poetry, they do writing clubs. We are offering tutoring based on our applications and the apps that we use now and our partnership with the MBLC. And I say that because without the partnership with the Merrimack Valley Library Consortium, which can be compromised if we do get decertified, that's what provides tutoring for our students between their library card. And I think that's a huge access that I come time and time and again, and I'm actually now putting myself out there, and I say putting myself, excuse me, putting the institution out there in their radio station and so forth, in order to advocate about all the resources we have. I have parents time and time and again coming to our institution saying, how can I help my son or my daughter? We need training, we need tutoring. We have that. And it's not only virtual, it's live. And it's all accessible to you through a library card. And so much so, because we are reaching the public that we have now, not only are you able to access a library card as a resident, you also have a temporary card if you're homeless or you're facing any type of situation that might push you in a shelter or in a place that you just don't have a residence. We give you a 30-day temporary card in order for you to be able to have the access that you should have access to. Because the thing is, is the libraries are restricting you from being able to grow. It's our duty to make our taxes work for us to grow. So therefore, you come back and want to serve for the community. So those implementations is what that we've been able to announce to the LITT grant, which is the Boston Foundation grant. And what we do is, they listen to stories just like ours. And I'm not using any more of the Lawrence's support, we're not anymore. We need direction. Okay, so what I'm meaning by that is that there has to be a strategic plan that aligns with that. And I'm lucky enough to remember a library that their current strategic plan expires in July of 2024. And I ask you thoroughly to be ready to receive our new strategic plan as of July of 2024. And I hope they're aligned with the vision that I see for Lawrence as much as I see all of you in the same retro pack. But this LITT grant needs to align with that. So therefore, this will be done in the third-floor space that will allow what we call mobile furniture space. We deal with the population, we call disability, and call disability, children who learn differently. And we're gonna be sure that they have the tools necessarily available to them to be able to flourish in our department. And then on top of that, we need, we need to make sure to be self-proper. And this is why we need support. But I'm, I'm tired asking for support from people outside. I think we need to support and invest in our city, specifically the library institution, and then we can ask the rest from other people.
Councillor. So you mentioned a few things, a few things here that I was curious about. One thing that you said was a differentiation. You, one thing that you said was a different accreditation, like losing the, the connections?
Yes, this is creation, yes sir.
Is that a concern, Paul?
Yes, sir.
Uh, why?
So as it's right now, and I think it's important to note, the city of Lawrence has always been on a waiver. It is the first time that the MBLC, which is the state, let's, let's simplify, it's the first time that the city, post-COVID, has, uh, put a timeframe. Because not only our library, several other libraries were over and over again on the policy of the administration time, applying for a waiver. The waiver simply means is that you can continue to be eligible for state funds and whatever have you that comes with that connection in order to be able to stay within the consortium. What happens is that they realize that municipalities or towns were abusing that system, so they put a timeframe. So when I embarked in this, we were in year three. But thankfully and unfortunately, due to COVID, they gave us and granted us an extension, which I say was my saving grace, because I still had to understand it. And now we are, we're coming upon year four. That means by this fiscal year, right now, when the board comes in front of you instead of the mayor and the rest of the city comes before you, to talk about the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, we need to discuss whether the city is gonna be out of the waiver or not, which is the library waiver. And then what happens at that moment, in regards in the defense of my board, is really what det- detriment this decertification. If we cannot obtain the number, because remember, they have a formula, the state. The formula, and I'm willing to share with you guys all this information, the formula indicates a number that the municipality appropriation requirement is needed. And so therefore, that number is calculated based on the census. And mind you, this is a number of people who filed the census, not really what we see in our city. So therefore, they're being reasoned. That number and plus the formula that comes from it indicates what the MAR, which the municipality, needs to do in order to fund appropriately the library. At this moment, it's not being met. But into the defense of the city, we have undergone a lot. Not only have we been in receivership with our educational system, not only have we been victim of the God expulsion, not only have we been under other administrations, there's been things that Lawrence can tackle, one of the, one of the well-known course economy in the city of Massachusetts, there's a lot of things. We've been in this though for almost two decades. So what happens at this moment, this will be the first time, if we do not get out of this by fiscal year of twenty twenty-six, that the city of Lawrence will be decertified from the state of Massachusetts. Let me share with you what that implicates. We will not have, yes sir.
Before you get there, you mentioned the budget and allocation.
Yes, sir.
Percentage wise, how far we are from that, to break that one?
I don't wanna give you a percentage, but I will give you a number. Uh, currently, we receive a little bit over one point two million dollars in MAR funds, municipality appropriation for our department. Uh, the city, the state's recommendation is that we should be a little bit about one point seven. And so much so, that they actually implement about a three percent increase, two point five to three percent increase yearly, based on census. Therefore, if your census doesn't change, your formula doesn't change. And that's the way we've been able to, so as of right now, I would say we're, and reservedly so, five hundred thousand dollar shortage, five hundred thousand dollar shortage.
Correct.
You get it? So one point two, five hundred dollars, or one point seven, that's a beautiful number, but we can consider what we call a negotiating one. And that's what I think needs to be introduced at this point. We need to go in front of the state and be actually hands up, we understand, but we're not, as it was one nation under God, we're not created equal. And Lawrence is not.
How much of, how much money the city, city portion of it was for, the city actually allocated for the library actually?
Uh, there, our current budget right now for the city, city allocation is a little bit over one point two, sir.
Does the, does the total for the library?
Correct, sir, a little bit over one point.
And then, and the money coming from the state is about one point two?
Nope, the money coming from the state at that time, or as of right now, we actually, thank you for asking, uh, committee president, uh, we actually, for the first time in the state of Massachusetts, thank you ma'am, and we received for the first time three hundred and ten thousand dollars from the state. The, the highest amount ever given to the city of Lawrence from the state, because they are in fully support of our mission. So this is the first time, as of right now, we receive the second portion of that, and that has equaled a little bit over three hundred, uh, nine, uh, almost three hundred and nine thousand dollars. Prior to that, we were, the year before that, we were at two hundred, almost a little bit under three hundred thousand, and then prior to that it was lower. So the reason why I say that, I think is in, in retrospect, this is the highest we received. So mind you, you're saying they're not matching us, so it's not a matching contribution. You get it? But with that ma, with what they're giving us now, we've been able to sustain everything else. That one point two only covers salaries, the building infrastructure, the everything we used to, and literally, as you can see, inflation is a big factor, but we could have the, and we have also to mention the IT department in our building. So we cover electricity, heating, cooling, I mean, we're known as the city's emergency management center, sir, as the heating and the cooling center of the community.
Before we continue, uh, I think it might be more, it is seven o'clock, I know the community doesn't extend the, the distance. There is a lot, this, this, this turning into a conversation that is not, uh, that is not related to the item. So what I think is more appropriate, there are clearly more questions for the Counselor President, I have some in my head that, that I, I would like to ask you. And it's very interesting to, to hear that we may lose creditation depending on what, what happens. So what I recommend is for the library to put in an agenda item for our council. I know this has a lot to do with budget, I know there's more questions like financial related, but this is important stuff that we obviously know little or nothing about. Uh, I would like to continue this conversation at the committee of the whole level, or budget, whichever, um, the Counselor President at the time deemed is more appropriate, but I think this deserves its own item and a, and a further in-depth discussion. I appreciate that. I have a board meeting this Thursday and we have been working on presenting that to you.
Or do you, do you mind sending an, an item to the city clerk to discuss this potential?
Absolutely, if you have a question.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, I will entertain a motion. Motion on item number two zero eight two four, authorized to expend grand funds in the amount of twenty-two thousand dollars for the library initiative for teens and tweens from Boston Foundation, to be sent to full council with a favorable recommendation. Motion has been made by the vice chairs, their second.
Second.
Signed by Counselor Luzon, discussion, seeing none, I call the role Counselor Marmo.
Yes.
Counselor Luzon.
Yes.
Counselor President cannot vote, and the chair votes in the affirmative. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Alright, at this point, uh, I will ask Counselor Luzon to please recuse herself. Uh, Maria, please. Alright, can I have a motion? Keep this moving. To on table, item seventy-six dash twenty-four, resolution amending and rescinding the reimbursement requirement of the creating of private warrants to grant awardees from, um, the mayor's office. So motion has been made. Madam Chair. No, please note that at this point, I'm gonna be passing the gavel to the vice chair.
Yeah, I'll be this way. So we have a motion on table two, on table, item number seventy-six dash two four, resolution amending and rescinding the reimbursement requirement for the creating of private warrants, um, which I would like to note for the record, uh, that, uh, one paper, we need to separate this item and it should be two items, um, in regards to this one item, I'm not sure if I'm wording that correctly. Um, so we have a motion on table, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. The second was made, um, can I get a roll call? Roll, roll, not roll call. Chair, um, Stephanie Puntin?
Yes.
Vice Chair, um, Vega Marmo?
Yes.
And Counselor President cannot vote? Fine, I think it's clinical. Which passes. Um, and for, and for the record, uh, can we, uh, notate that I would be passing the gavel back to our madam chair?
That one has to pass back to the chair. Alright, tonight we have the acting director of the Office of Planning and Development, Mr. Carlos Matos, to talk about item seventy-six dash twenty-four. Yeah, or I don't know, who, we have three members of the one, the official. So we have, uh, we have.
To split, but which one would be considered A and what would be considered B?
Alright. That was a motion to on table, can I have a motion to split item seventy-six dash twenty-four to seventy-six dash twenty-four A, which? Is that what we're done? Alright, so this is to discuss seventy-six dash twenty-four A, which, uh, pertains to the federación, part of the, um, the creating of private, creating of private warrants. Uh, Director Matos, please.
Yes, ma'am, sure.
Last time we left off, we asked you questions regarding how does the process, what is the process, how does the process look like in terms of, um, people receiving the awards or et cetera? And also, we did receive, and I want to make this clear, we did receive, we also asked about the disclosures from Senior Advisor Spanner, which we did receive, we have all the letters here submitted in August, November. Um, we also have the commission's, uh, response, all in writing, which is also available publicly in the city clerk's office. So can we go through the section of that, that pertains to the federación for this item, please?
Sure. Um, so as we spoke last time, not only the federación, but also, uh, an institution or a general hospital.
Yes, that should be, uh, coming down.
That should be, we can split.
Counselor President.
Minister, I have a.
Counselor President.
Okay, so ma'am chair, so to us, it's not institution-specific as much as it is a rule, and so that's why I'm covering it as an example, citing the other folks that have the same need. That's the only reason why I'm, I'm kind of bubbling that way. I understand why you may want to exclude, uh, that one particular institution, um, because there was a potential conflict with regards to that, but it applies in general, which is what, we don't wanna, we don't wanna do a rule just for one, um, participant, we're trying to fix a problem, which is folks not having either budgeted or sufficient funds to be able to upfront the money and then get reimbursed for it. This is what that, this is the problem that we're trying to solve with this. And so it's institution independent from our perspective.
Well, uh, we have, we have an item, we have an item in front of us, which is seventy-six twenty-four, and that's in regard to two specific situations. One of them is, uh, one of them is in regard to the, uh, a hundred fifty thousand dollars that goes to the, uh, the clinic and a hundred thousand dollars that goes to the hospital. And the second one is the four hundred thousand dollars going to, uh, to a federación is fine. But this council have decided, or these both have decided, the subcommittee is to split it into two. If the concept applied to the same, and then we definitely could discuss that when we get to section B. But in the meantime, for the purpose of the, of, of the work of this council, uh, we have chosen to, and, and according to previous conversations that we even, we even have with the administration, that at some point it came up to, why did you guys didn't exclude it at the city council level? We choose to do that and not treat it individually. For multiple reasons, the council felt more comfortable voting as an individual portion. Portionally, me, one vote, the city councilor, when that, the whole item come in front of me with forty-two different, uh, sub-items, uh, I feel better comfortable voting for the whole thing than that one. When that happened back then, there was multiple issues with several items, including some of them that, um, that were not approved. What we, uh, have decided at this point is to separate the conversations. If that applied to multiple conversations, it's correct individuals, it's not an issue, it's not a problem. Anyway, you're looking to have that specific, uh, that specific reimbursement, uh, strategic for two different, uh, uh, sub-items of the forty-two that we actually imposed back then, we approved this a year and a half ago, a year, a year or so ago. So because in the fact that it's only for two, we can treat it differently. If we're looking to fix the entire item for everybody that have the same issue, and then we should bring it to the council and discuss each one of them, or perhaps the entire situation. But what was presented in front of us back then, when you present seventy-six twenty-four, this item was for those specific, for those two specifics. We're discussing this for those two specifics, which is the federación is fine, uh, the four hundred thousand dollars and the one hundred fifty thousand, I believe if it is, if, if the numbers are correct, going to the clinic and the hospital. So I think it's fine to keep, make sure that we move forward with, go with a comfortable way, and then keep the discussion open for all of us.
So Counselor President, um, as you finished just splitting then in that sense, but the way that the item is presented is not specific to those two institutions, the way that they were presented. It was presented in a general sense of changing the format of which the monies were distributed. But if you feel comfortable just splitting this and discussing the federation, I'm happy to, to do whatever you like. But just, just if you look at the way that the item is placed on the agenda, it does not speak about two specific institutions, it speaks about a general method of allocation of funds.
Yes, uh, pretty much, yeah. It, it did ease like that, but when we're discussing it, we include two items.
Correct, we gave those as examples, uh, pretty much.
No, 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 no. That was not an example, that was very clear of what it was. It was very clear that we were discussing those two, those two specific items, that we were discussing. The four hundred thousand dollars for the federación is fine, and the one hundred fifty thousand dollars for two, two other institutions.
Correct.
So those are the things that we're discussing, we're not changing the entire thing, because it would be another, another set of challenge that we were not aware of. We are discussing specifically the, the resolution amending the, uh, receiving and reimbursement requirement for those two. And those two have been split into A and B. We don't want to change the entire thing, otherwise we're gonna have to have a bigger discussion and bring the entire item in front of us, which is. and bring the entire item in front of us, which is not here, we have an item 76 24, which is related to the original item, which I believe it was 376, something like that, 33. So it has, it's now being presented that way. The intent might be this one, but it, it might change from the last time we had a conversation.
Like I said, Council President, Madam Chair, um, my understanding was that it wasn't put that way in the end, but if it's the committee's, if it's the committee's will, I'm happy to discuss that specific, those specific issues directly. So, uh, the question surrounding the Federación is the same as I had stated and has been stated before. Um, they are having difficulty with regards to coming up with the initial money and then being reimbursed. We are in need of the services that they provide, and we're trying to accommodate the situation so that they can, uh, provide the services for which they were awarded the funds. And this is just really an accommodation of how they receive the money and nothing more.
The questions, comments? Yeah, okay, um, please, Madam Chair, I'm not, not sure, uh, to what extent, um, you would be able to provide me with answers in regards to how, um, well, okay, let me start from the beginning. One of my questions, uh, from what I noticed was, uh, on to the review committee, I see the, the review committee as to how, um, these applications will be screened, right? Um, is that it's three board members of the FHC and two community members. Would you happen to know if these community members are elected, appointed, like, how, how do, oh, you, you don't, oh, okay. Um, all right, so. So, uh, Mr. Matos, would you have any answers in regards to how, um, FHC would be managing this process at all? Or you just, it's pretty much just the transferring of funds?
Just the transferring of funds, we would monitor and get reports in terms of their accomplishments.
So if we, if you have any questions specific to?
The internal workings of that organization?
Yeah.
They're an independent organization, we measure their results and what we ask them to do.
Great. Can I have a motion to send this up to the full councils of the committee, to send, to send up item 76 dash 24A to the full council as a committee report? Which is in relation to the Federación Hispana de Buenos Aires. Motion. Motion has been made by Councilor Normal.
I mean.
Uh, passing the gavel now to the vice chair.
Uh, so we have a motion on the table to submit this item to full council as a committee report, um, can I get a second?
Second.
A motion has been seconded, can I get a roll call, please?
Roll call? Chair Stephanie Infante?
Yes.
Vice Chair Vivian Normal?
Yes.
Um, Council President Giovanni Rodriguez is present, Madam President.
Can we please, motion passes, um, can you please note for the record that I'm passing the gavel back to Madam Chair Infante?
All right, at this point now, we have item 76 dash 24B, that is related to the Greater Lawrence Health Fund, the Greater Lawrence Family Health Center and Modelo Health. And this is, um, can you remind me, I, I don't know why it was taken away, but the actual document that you guys submitted is not, is no longer part of our package. It's a, it's, this is, it's up to you guys, but can you remind me how, how much, uh, is being allocated from this funding to that initiative?
Correct, so, uh, our finance manager, she can answer the question.
Good evening, Councilor Sukank from the Community Development Department. Uh, the Greater Lawrence Philharmonic Health Center was awarded 100,000 dollars and Lawrence General Hospital 50,000 dollars.
And this is strictly for the usage of the Modelo Health at Pregnancy Trackers' Alliance. Any questions or comments? I have a question. How, aside from the city of Lawrence, aside from the city of Lawrence, uh, providing the funding to these two organizations, how is the city, what is the city's involvement? Um, yeah, so what is the, the city's involvement, um, after the funding?
After the funding is allocated, uh, the city is going to be receiving the benefits from its residents in terms of the services that they provide, like any other supporting, no different than any other ones that are on the list. They provide a service that we're looking for, that is valuable to the residents of the, of the city of Lawrence, and that's why they awarded these funds.
Any other questions or comments? See none, can I get a motion to send this to the full council as a committee report? So move. Motion has been made by the vice chair, Maria, please note that I'm passing the gavel to the vice chair.
Uh, motion on the table to submit this item to full council as a committee report, can I get a second?
Second.
Uh, there's a second at the table, oh, can I get a roll call?
Roll call, Chair Stephanie Infante?
Yes.
Vice Chair Vivian Normal?
Yes.
Council President Giovanni Rodriguez is present, but cannot vote, motion passed.
Thank you. Motion carries, uh, note for the record that I'm passing the gavel back to our Madam Chair Infante.
Okay, and my Councilor Luzon, all right. All right. Can I have a motion to withdraw, uh, at, under table item, item 400 dash 23, the appropriation transfer in the amount of 2 million, 235,000 dollars among city departments through the ARPA slash free cash allocations?
Okay.
Um, and for the, the purpose of the withdrawal is that this is, this is no longer needed. So move. Motion has been made by the vice chair, there are second, second, seconded by Council Luzon, uh, discussion. See none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, ayes have it. And lastly, can I have a motion to withdraw from, from table items under October 3rd, 2023? Item 383B dash 23, appropriation transfer in the amount of 450,000 among city departments through the ARPA slash free cash allocations, funds allocated under document number 411B dash 22, brought to us by our manager of financial services, and it's for the same purpose, this item is no longer needed by the office. So move. Motion has been made by the vice chair, there are second?
The chair can order that, can order that.
To withdraw?
I don't think so.
Why can't you?
I'm not supposed to hear.
It's nothing, no, that has nothing to do with that.
It's just different, okay, I'll be, I'm sorry, my, my, my mistake, I'm sorry, second.
Seconded by Council Luzon, discussion. See none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, if the ayes have it, at this point, I will, uh, entertain. So moved by Council Normal, there are second?
Second.
Seconded by Council Luzon, all those in favor say aye. Aye.